Afternoon Commissioner, how are you?
Good afternoon, how are you Councilman?
Good, very good. Please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Anne Marie Ambrose, Commissioner, Department of Human Services.
Please proceed.
Chanel Hans, Chief of Staff, Finance, Food Department, Human Services.
Vanessa Garrett Harley, Deputy Commissioner, Children and Youth Division, Department of Human Services.
Welcome.
Good afternoon Members of City Council, I'm Anne Marie Ambrose, Commissioner of the Department of Human Services. DHS's FY15 General Grants Revenue Budget Request is $657,450,812. Our General Obligation Budget Request is $98,338,951. This is the same as the FY14 Estimated Obligation Level. DHS's Grants Revenue Fund Request is $559,111,861. I would like to highlight two of DHS's many accomplishments this year. DHS is currently fully engaged in a major system transformation called Improving Outcomes for Children. IOC is based on a belief that a community neighborhood approach with clearly defined rules between county and provider staff will positively impact safety, permanency, and well-being. Under IOC, families will have one case manager and one plan to guide them through their child welfare system. Services will be delivered in 10 geographic regions by lead agencies called Community Umbrella Agencies. Currently DHS is on schedule to have all 10 Community Umbrella Agencies fully operational by January of 2015. CUA's 1 and 2 began receiving in-home and placement referrals in January and April of 2013. CUA 3 and CUA 4 each began receiving in-home and family foster care referrals in January of 2014. CUA 5 is scheduled to begin receiving cases next week. And CUA 6 through 8 will begin to receive cases in July of 2014. The remaining CUA's will begin to receive cases in November of 2014. Additionally, I'm pleased to report that on August 5th of 2013 DHS sex abuse investigation staff began working with staff from the Philadelphia Police Department, the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, and the District Attorney's Office at the new co-located site called the Philadelphia Safety Collaborative at 300 East Punning Park. The co-located facility was created to better coordinate investigations and services to child victims of sexual abuse. This new larger facility will help lessen the trauma of the investigative process by offering a comfortable, child-friendly place for children to receive services and by allowing partner agencies to effectively and efficiently coordinate their efforts in a single location. Our commitment to this process is evident by the fact that we have increased funding for the Philadelphia Children's Alliance by 442 percent since FY08. I would like to say a special thanks to Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez for her leadership and support in moving this project forward to completion. My staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have regarding my testimony today or the formal testimony I submitted previously. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. On page 2 of the testimony, you talk about 251, which I believe is 14 percent of the staff force unfilled positions. Is that correct? What are the particular challenges in having those unfilled positions and is there a particular plan to get those filled?
So the challenges for us are transitioning to improving outcomes for children, so we don't want to fill positions that ultimately might be direct case management positions in the community. So we've been very conservative and actually have used our data to inform. Recently, we decided that we needed to fill some of the positions because caseloads were creeping up and we were getting more investigations coming in, so we recently filled about 119 positions.
Okay, alright, so they're being filled kind of almost as we speak, right?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, great. Alright, let me go to the council members. Councilman Jones.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner, good afternoon. Thank you for the work you do and to your very competent staff, many of whom I've gotten to know on case specifics and recognized in doing so the hard test, the often challenging and almost impossible tasks you guys face. And I want you to know sincerely that I appreciate, I could not do your job. And I've said that to members of your staff. My heart is way on my sleeve and I know it is in your staff persons too, but you guys have developed a tougher skin than I ever could dealing with some of the not-so-pretty parts of our society. So again, sincerely thank you for the work you guys do.
Thank you.
And I want to say before I even get started that the questions that I'm asking are, and I wanted to put that on the record, aren't designed to come at the department. It is designed to get clarity for me so that I can help you. And whether it's through legislation or budget or whether it's through the ability to provide you resources that you may need, that's the spirit of what I'm asking about. So with that said, can you help me to understand your CUA process? And I remember early on when you were kind enough to orientate me and my staff members how your interest was to create a localized service delivery product. But for the record, can you tell us how that started?
Sure. Well, this Improving Outcomes for Children actually comes directly out of the Child Welfare Review Panel recommendations related to the Danielle Kelly death. All of those 37 recommendations were related to safety and the need for the department to focus more clearly in a laser-like fashion on the safety of the children that we're responsible for. And the specific recommendation that IOC actually addresses is the need to provide clarity between what the provider worker does and what the DHS staff do. And so if you remember from the Danielle Kelly death, there were caseworkers that the department paid to go out and visit Danielle Kelly through a private provider and there were DHS staff who were supposed to go out and check on the safety of her and her siblings. And unfortunately, what I've come to say when everybody's responsible, nobody's responsible. So we had a dual-case management system that was inefficient and ineffective in keeping children safe. And so the history behind this is about 20 years ago DHS sort of privatized services and they started having private providers go out and deliver services, direct case management. But they never redefined what DHS staff were supposed to do. And so IOC is an attempt to fix that structural problem. So through IOC, we have direct case management through provider workers that are paid by the department. They are the single case manager responsible for those families. And we also knew that we were one big building at 1515 Arch in the middle of the city where none of our children and families lived. And we believed this was an opportunity to use neighborhood providers who had a history of providing services to really gain the trust of the children and families that we serve so that they would go to those Community Umbrella Agencies for help. And so we have, I've actually talked about IOC since 2011 in my testimony. We've had a four-year planning process with the benefit of over 150 stakeholders, including providers, advocates, the courts, DHS leadership and staff. And the launch of IOC was actually last year as a result of that planning process. We also have the two leading national child welfare foundations supporting the work of IOC, so Casey Family Programs has been providing guidance from the very beginning. And more recently, about two years ago, the Annie E. Casey Foundation started providing us with support and guidance.
So, and I appreciate all of the due diligence that went into this directional change. However and nevertheless, you could build a rocket to go to Mars and if folk on the ground find issues with it, you should adjust and maybe even take that into account. Having said that, my wheelhouse of information will never be in the social work area, but from time to time I get concerns from stakeholders, end-users, your clients, that prompt me to want to take a look at, well, how are we doing things a certain way? And one of my concerns is regulations, monitoring, oversight of those CUA's. It's become very popular for folk to kind of, whether it's zoning or other things, to kind of cut out the council persons in there. And one of the good things about us is that we don't know a whole lot about a whole lot of things, but we know a whole lot of things that people and other people have information and expertise on. And so to be able to get that check and balance, I think is very important from a oversight kind of way. Your department represents 2.2 billion if you include health and behavioral health. It makes up a massive part of our appropriations. So with this system, I have some concerns about how we make sure and assure, and I know it's still early, I'm gonna say that again, I know it's still early, but with an eye towards not having conflicts of interest. Meaning that if I'm a subcontractor and my job is to self-police or monitor myself, I'm never going to find an issue with myself, ever. I'm perfect. Ask my staff, they'll tell you. I will never, but also the good thing about me is that I have to go every four years before the voters and then they may correct me a little bit and say, "Well, yeah, you're alright, but here's some things you can improve on." So one of the things I'm very concerned about is whether or not it is structured to be able to look at itself and say, "We need to do things this way." And what happens in issues maybe of conflict of interest? That it is, I'm throwing the ball and my sub-receipients are catching it, so therefore I'm not going to be as discriminating against taking people out of the process because of failure to execute your mission. How do you circumvent or safeguard against that in the CUA system?
So, not a day goes by that we don't get one or several complaints about what we do at DHS. So I'm not unfamiliar to the complaints that you probably receive about my agency and I know that we try to address those when you bring them to our attention. Another criticism of the agency that played out in the Child Welfare Review Panel is that we weren't monitoring our providers. And so the provider in the Danielle Kelly death had never provided children services before and probably shouldn't have been providing the services that they were providing. And so when I came in as Commissioner in 2008, one of the first things that I did was create a Division of Performance Management and Accountability. And I think we presented some of the work that we started when you came to our office for the orientation. That division has actually evolved and there is a very arduous quality assurance process that we have for monitoring the CUA's because we also share your concerns. Despite the fact that the direct case management will be done by Community Umbrella Agencies, the responsibility for children and families still rests with the Department of Human Services. And so we've built structured monitoring functions into Improving Outcomes for Children for all of the CUA agencies and the subcontracting agencies. And I'll just go over briefly some of those quality assurance functions so that-
Rather than do that because my chairman is a strict timekeeper. I want to, I've sent you a letter and having you in advance will argue about whether it was to be provided in writing, we won't argue about it. But some of the questions I've wanted submitted for the record were, what is your processing chart for ordinary placement?
I have answered all of those questions. I'm happy to go over them today or I can present them in writing.
So I don't have to keep talking, you can just answer.
Okay. So when calls come into the hotline, we answer those calls and we have, I have all the questions and answers, I'm good. We answer all of those calls and we have something that we've created called Hotline Guided Decision Making. In other jurisdictions and in child welfare in general, it's called differential response because every call is not the same. So based on the allegations that are brought to our attention, we have specially trained hotline staff who handle those calls and they have a script that they use and we prioritize those calls based on the vulnerability of the children and the issues that are brought to our attention. And so, you know, sometimes there's a two-hour response that we have to go out for, sometimes it's not a priority and we sort of triage those cases. And Gary Williams, who's my director, and Vanessa know these things much more explicitly, but we have a safety assessment process and Gary can talk through all of those things if you want the specifics. But based on those issues, we make a determination of whether there's an immediate safety threat. If there's an immediate safety threat to a child, we have a responsibility to remove them from an unsafe environment. And so that's what the hotline workers do immediately. And then there's an entire process that we use to make decisions about what's the most appropriate placement for that child. If they can't remain in their home, we look for family first and we're proud of our kinship care rates. DHS does a good job in keeping children with their families whenever possible. And if that can't be done, then we move them to foster care settings. So we use a least restrictive set of criteria that's laid out in the Child Protective Services law to make those decisions.
So, we're going to skip down some of those because what it calls for is a process chart which we'll provide the Chair so that every council person can have that. And it also talks about a process chart when complaints happen. And we will provide that to the Chair for all members of council. But let me, how many children are under your care?
I think you're breaking, you said I was going to stick to the five-minute-
Yeah, but she was going to answer all these, I was going to skip down for you.
Okay.
So that you don't have, she doesn't have to answer each and what-
You must be a politician, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I am, no doubt. So how many children are under your care?
So, under our care, as far as cases that have been accepted for service, we have about 4,500 children in placement, which is out of home care and for, except for service cases where families need some services but the children can remain in the home, we have about 1,500 cases right now.
So, how many children, and these are hard questions, have been fatally injured under the last three years, let's go with that?
So, in the last year, there were seven near fatalities and six fatalities. And I don't have the other two years with me.
You said seven fatalities?
Seven fatalities and six near fatalities. No, six, seven near fatalities and six fatalities.
And these are children that were in foster care?
No, no. They were on active DHS cases. That's what the law provides for. Act 33 provides for active DHS cases.
How many incidents of child abuse were reported to your agency in the last three years?
Oh.
And while you're getting that-
Reports coming in?
Yeah, and then how many while in your care?
Can I get my glasses? I need my glasses.
It's okay.
So that's about 1,200 reports a month that come through the hotline as I described it.
1,200 reports. How many are in, while in your care, whether you get, whether through a foster parent or through direct care? How many complaints of abuse do you get annually over the last three years?
I don't have that figure with me today.
Alright, that was in here. That was question number three. And under the documents table comes the questions, that was number three.
Yeah, so number three, there were 18 indicated reports in FY13, which was July 30th to June 30th of 2013.
Say it again.
Eighteen.
Eighteen for that year?
Correct.
How many for the past three years?
Um, I don't have that with me, but I can get that to you.
You can get it to the Chair.
Sure.
I'm going to ask one other, so to explain the follow-ups, once you get a complaint of abuse, and I don't want to get into the types of it, and I want to maintain all of the confidences I can.
Sure.
What happens once you get a complaint? What is that process?
So if it's a complaint of a-
Now stop, Mr. Chair, look.
If it's a complaint of a child that's in our care, those investigations are actually handled by the Department of Public Welfare. So they handle all of those investigations through their Southeast Regional Office and then they provide us with a finding based on their investigation of those cases. If it's a general complaint where there isn't a report that's called in, we handle those complaints through a number of ways, through the Commissioner's Action Response Office, which is managed in my office where I have staff who look into those complaints. And sometimes we do those independent of our staff and sometimes we do them in consultation with our staff. And then there's also in our Provider Relations and Evaluations of Program staff, which is where we look at our provider agencies. Sometimes it's a concern about a provider. And so if that comes up, then we handle, there's special analysts within that unit who go out and investigate that complaint.
Mr. Chairman, again, this process will continue on our next round.
Okay, I'm sure of it. Okay, thank you sir. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Are you familiar with the information request I made to the Budget Director for all departments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm really looking at those services that were once performed by city workers, now performed by contractors, whether they are local firms, whether there's diversity of local firms, whether the workers there are paid living wage and benefits. So I want to focus on just two areas within my timeframe. First is waivers that were requested with regard to living wage and benefit standard. Fiscal year 12, you requested 16 waivers, I believe. Fiscal year 13, requested 10 waivers. Fiscal year 14, requested 11 waivers. I want to focus on one waiver in particular. I'm not going to call the name of the agency, but it's a $25 million contract. And the reason given by the Managing Director's Office, the documentation that I see here says it was in the best interest of the city. It doesn't say financial hardship, it doesn't say there was collective bargaining agreement, it simply says it was in the best interest of the city.
Yeah, I'm sorry Councilman, I don't actually have that on my list of waivers that we gave this year. My list has eight different providers and PHMC is not one of them. So I might be confused about the list that I have and the one that you received, so I apologize.
And that's part of the reason why I asked departments for the information, because I don't think this information is necessarily accurate. So I prefer to receive it from the departments. So I'll just shift in questions. In terms of the waivers that you requested, I should say, I should start here, were the waivers actually requested by the agencies? Because that's the actual protocol.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when the waivers were requested by the agencies, did you ask them how much they could afford to pay?
It looks like only on one of them we did ask, and in fact, the agency, for Adelphi Village, we denied their waiver because they had a lot of cash in reserve. And so it appeared that they could easily pay a living wage. And so that was the one that we denied. I can't speak to whether, I don't know if we did that routinely, but on this one, we did.
And you are aware that the law says that partial waivers are preferred to full waivers? In other words, if they can't pay $10,080 per hour, which is 150 percent of federal minimum wage, and offer comparable health benefits for full-time employees, and up to 56 hours of paid sick leave, whatever portion of that they can offer, they should offer. We should not be subsidizing poverty wages and particularly in this line of work, it's important. And the number of waivers may not seem like a lot of money, but if that $25 million contract does not exist, there's still some mighty big contracts there.
I agree with you and I think we could do a better job on doing the partial waiver.
Okay, I'll be satisfied with that. And you are still forwarding, or that information has been forwarded, in terms of information requests?
Yes, and I'll make sure that the chart I have is consistent with the information you have.
The other concern I have, of course, is whether there's a diversity of opportunities being offered once this stuff is contracted out. And when I look at fiscal year 13, and the fact that the department was responsible for about $53 million in contracting, I see that $47 million in contract dollars were excluded because there were supposedly little to no opportunities related to businesses owned by women and people of color. Can you explain that to me? That's 81 percent of the contract dollars being excluded from opportunities?
I think that change, and I know that Angela Dowd-Burton couldn't be here today, she had a prior commitment, I think some of that was done in consultation with DHS regarding our numbers because of the fact that so many of our contracts are court-ordered placements. And so the department sometimes doesn't have a say in where the court decides some of those children go. And so we have lots of conversations with Judge Dougherty and he's an amazing partner, but he has a little bit more power over some of these decisions than I do. We've done a really good job of trying to look at things creatively and in fact have brought some of our bigger providers into the city to provide services, and I think we've talked about that before. We've also seen some increases with some of our bigger providers. And so we've been hammering home the message with them around the supplier diversity plans.
So the question is, are there goals set for supplier diversity?
Yes.
And if not, why? Then why are the, why is $47 million in contracts excluded if their actual goal was supplier diversity?
So, on some of the, I have both calculations. So, the way the law is written, we've seen progress, we're still below the 25 percent and we have to do better.
That's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is, why was $47 million in contracting excluded?
I think you'd have to ask the Office of Economic Opportunity. We did the calculations both ways.
You did not request for that $47 million to be excluded?
We had conversations with the Office of Economic Opportunity about the difficulty in reaching the goals based on the array of service providers that we have.
Did you, did you request that the $47 million, did you request that 81 percent of your contract dollars be excluded?
No, I don't recall making that request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Councilman. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I have a couple of questions for you and just in keeping in mind what everyone else said, and really has summed up here, is that there, you know, there's really nothing more important than the future and the focus on our young people. And as the mother of a four-year-old, I know that if I mess up, I can't, you can't do it back, you can't take it back, you can't do over. Once you mess up with a child, that's it, you know? And so the work that DHS does is critical to our future, to our young people, to our communities. It's so very important. So I just feel that this is one of the city's departments that, you know, deserves the attention and spotlight, if you will, during budget season, and we want to, you know, do that appropriately and ask, you know, the harder, more difficult questions. So I just want to ask a few questions and I want to start out with questions about the CUA. And I wanted to talk about the CUA in the sense that, as I understand it, you know, and I always look at nationally, what are other cities doing? How are we, you know, how does Philadelphia fit in with what other folks are doing? Are we doing things, you know, sort of ahead of the curve? Are we behind the ball? Are we looking at what's succeeded elsewhere or are we just trying something brand-new? And so my question regarding the CUA's is really how they're managed, how that has worked thus far. I know that it's relatively new, but I was wondering if you would speak to the fact that it seems as if we're the only ones who are on this sort of arrangement on a national level that I know of, unless you can speak to that and know of others who are doing this sort of arrangement?
Sure. So as I indicated earlier, we actually spent about two years researching Improving Outcomes for Children and we had the support of Casey Family Programs during the initial piece of that research. What we did is a scan of best, national best practice. And so there are, there are many systems that are doing, quote, "privatized" service delivery. However, they're not doing it at neighborhood level that we are. And so we visited New York City, which is actually doing the direct case management through the providers, not through the agency. We visited Florida, where the whole state is privatized, and they created lead agencies that are very similar to the CUA's. We talked and continue to talk to Kansas, which has been one of the most successful privatized systems that's out there. And so we've done a lot of research- And so we've done a lot of research, but nothing is like Philadelphia. And so we wanted to make sure that whatever we did was going to be best for the children and families that we serve, which is why, as we learned about what was happening, we brought together 150 different stakeholders that I referenced earlier. We broke ourselves out into six groups to look at things like practice. And so we have a new safety model of practice that's consistent with the values that we established. We had a Contracting and Finance Subcommittee, we had a Legal and Legislative Subcommittee, we had a data.
Right.
And we, we, we went over different systems, we talked through lots of...
But I guess what I'm asking is, for city, for what other cities are similar to Philadelphia in terms of the scope of services that we're offering and also the numbers of children? So I think you said it was about 4,500 children in placement, and then another 1,500 who are at home under DHS or the COOAS supervision. So what, who, who else is doing what we are doing that is at this size and in a similar fashion?
So New York City is probably the, the system that's most similar to what we're doing. And as I indicated, they're doing the direct case management. Now, they do that in their boroughs, so we went out and visited those community centers in their boroughs when we went out.
How many children are they serving? Because New York City is considerably larger.
Way, way, way more than we are. I, I can get that number for you.
Okay.
And the other thing that we took from New York City was their teaming model of practice.
Their what?
So while, teaming, we call it family team conferencing. So while DHS has given the direct case management responsibility to the COOAs, we continue to monitor every single case. Initially, we do a safety conference within 20 days of us getting that case, but then every three months, DHS staff, what we call facilitators, are actually out in the community umbrella agencies, teaming the case with the family and anybody that the family wants to bring, and any service provider, including our behavioral health partners who sit in on those teamings, so that we can monitor how things are going for that family based on the plan that's been developed.
I still don't think that we have the answer here, because as I said, New York City is, you know, a population of 8, 9 million people, or 1.5. And, you know, with the five boroughs, I'm sure that they, you know, they, they serve a larger population. And so it's, it's not really comparable to Philadelphia and our issues, even though geographically we're, you know, both, you know, very close by in East Coast Cities and all that. But in terms of the, the scope of services that they're providing in their boroughs, in their areas, and the, the numbers of folks that they have in terms of providers and actually out and about doing this work, you know, it, it would be great to get some idea of who else is nearby. It's Baltimore, which is a city that's probably a little closer in, in scope and size. You know, what, what are they doing? What about Boston? You know, what about other cities that are similar, that, that are doing this?
So, so there's no other city that's doing what Philadelphia's doing.
So there's no, okay.
We do, we do, we do have collaborations with Boston. They're a state-run system, though, so it's difficult to compare them because we're a state-administered, county, county-administered, state oversight state, and Massachusetts is not. I think you're exactly right. When we compare ourselves to cities and looking at child welfare issues, we compare mostly with places like Cleveland and Baltimore, based on our poverty rates, based on our number of single-headed households. And so those similarities are much more clear with, with the, the cities that you've mentioned.
And, and you said that the COOAS system came out of the Danielle Kelly case?
The...
That it came out of the Improving Outcomes for Children?
The, the recommendation that we addressed was one of the recommendations in the Danielle Kelly death, yes.
Okay. And, kind of, the bell rung, so I'll, I'll come back around for my next set of questions. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Taska.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
On page one of your testimony, you stated that one of the goals of this system information entitled Improving Outcomes for Children, which uses 10 regional providers called community umbrella agencies or COOAs, is to have more children and youth maintained safely in their homes and communities. In this regard, can you describe the COOAS selection process and state the number of COOAs that are based inside the city or outside of the city?
So, um, the, what we recognized that, and, and I, I was able to watch the testimony of Dr. Evans and heard him talk about the goal that he and Judge Dougherty and I had to bring kids closer to home. And in fact, we have too many kids in congregant care settings, and most times those congregant care settings are outside of the city. And so the goal was really to provide supportive services in the communities where our children and families live, and make those services easily accessible. And so the selection process was looking at the, the RFP that we developed, and that was after all of the work we did with the stakeholders. And the selection process was the response to the RFP, as well as looking at a financial audit of the agencies that applied, looking at past performance of those agencies based on the services that they were delivering to DHS or elsewhere, and then doing a presentation. What was their vision for improving outcomes for children in the neighborhoods where they were applying? And so that was the presentation to me and my executive staff, and the decisions were made based on that criteria.
Well, do the boards of the COOAs represent the, reflect the communities of where they are?
So some of them do better than others, and so I can go through of, of the ones...
Do you require them to have a diverse board?
Absolutely, and...
And that's inclusive of the community where they are?
Absolutely.
So you say some of them are doing better, and so those who are not doing better, what do you do to make them comply?
Well, for instance, one of the requirements of the community umbrella agencies that they, is that they have a community advisory board. So that community advisory board is made up of community members who would advise the COOAS and DHS about how things are going for the children and families that are being served in their neighborhood. One of the members of that community advisory board must sit on the Board of Directors of the COOAS. So there's an accountability issue that happens there. With a couple of the COOAs in the first round of selections, they did not get selected because they didn't have a diverse board of directors for their agency. Second time around, they had actually done much, much better, and so they ended up being a successful applicant the second time around. So it is something that we've taken very seriously, because we believe that the people delivering the services to the children and families that we serve should be culturally appropriate and relate to them in a way that helps them address the issues that that brought them to the agency's attention.
Have all the COOAs been set up?
They have all been selected.
That the contracts have been left?
Correct.
Throughout the city?
Correct.
Now, we just talked a little bit about the role that you would play in once they're all up and running, but had you say that you're going to have clear monitoring oversight? I mean, how much are you going to be involved? And does that call duplicates services?
So we've tried to intentionally and deliberately eliminate the duplication of service, which is why the model is for a single-case management role. But the way that DHS is going to be involved primarily is through the teaming process, and Vanessa can walk through that teaming process, where we have a DHS staff person monitoring and looking at how the plan is working for that family every 90 days. So we'll be checking in every 90 days. And more importantly, through our Division of Performance Management and Accountability, we have several monitoring functions that we'll be doing, which are quality assurance functions, where we're randomly looking at cases on a weekly basis to check the safety assessment of those cases. Quarterly basis, we're randomly pulling cases and reviewing those cases to make sure things are going well with the case. And then we also have established over a number of years our Child Stat process and our Quality Service Review process, where we regularly review cases. With the Quality Service Review process, we randomly pull cases, 12 cases every quarter for the COOAs. We spend two days in, with a team of folks that includes all stakeholders. So we have advocates that participate, people from CHOP, people from the court. Two people teams review those cases, they interview the child, they interview the family, they interview service providers, they interview teachers, and they then rate that case. They look at, how's this child doing? And they rate that case. And then they rate the system performance on the case with certain measures that we've established. With Child Stat, that's a, even, we take cases from the Quality Service Review, and then we look at performance measures for those providers. And we review those cases every quarter for each of the COOAs. So there's a pretty rigorous monitoring function. The other thing that we've added is something that we called Quality Visitation Review, where we go out randomly and select cases, and I think we're going to be doing 20 or 30 a month, where we go out and we interview the family. And we say, you know, have you been receiving services? Who was here? How long did they stay? Did they come in the house and look at things and make sure kids were safe, or did they just sit on the porch and ask you five questions and leave? And that Quality Visitation Review is a really important way to check on how kids and families are doing and how families perceive the services that we're delivering. And so we have a pretty rigorous monitoring function that we've established.
I have one more question while you start. When you, when the COOAs were organized, when people, when the agencies presented a proposal to you, and I guess you had sent out an RFP, and then they had to respond to how you thought the COOAs would work, right?
Correct.
So they responded. Now, there, a lot of these agencies have to hire additional people.
Correct.
Are they going to train these people, or they're hiring staff that, individuals who may already have been in a service to families before?
So, so we actually assisted with the training with the support of the state. So the Office of Children, Youth, and Families have, has been supportive of improving outcomes for children from the very beginning. We actually meet with them every other week to ensure things are going well. We've used their Child Welfare Training Program and their Charting the Course Training, which is how workers who do direct service in child welfare get certified. And our training, I don't know how many people we've trained over the last 398 staff from the COOAs, with more coming. We actually had a new class that started. I think we have 114 people being trained. So this has been a pretty gigantic effort, but essential for us to do to make sure that all of the work that we've done over the last six years to ensure that children in this city are safe gets transferred to the COOAs and the agencies that are doing the work at the neighborhood level.
Mr. President, I have a lot of questions, but what I'm going to do is just ask a couple when my turn comes around.
Mm-hmm.
Key questions, but I would submit questions to, Ms. Ambrose, and ask her to respond, and then we will share the questions as answers.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Because we could be here all afternoon.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, you said you were going to do the same thing?
No. You didn't say that? You didn't say that? Oh, sure. I, I mean, some, some of them, I, to, to be honest, I already submitted mine in writing, and there was miscommunications about providing it back in writing, so while we're here...
No, I thought I heard you say "me too" when the Councilwoman was saying.
I know.
No. All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Well, as you can see with, with, with this new paradigm shift, there are a lot of questions, and it's not unusual, we're adjusting to a different way of trying to provide services to families, children and families, and, and what we hope to be a better way. Now, you've given a lot of explanation on the accountability on the case management side. Speak to us about accountability and how we're going to monitor those CBOs that are on trench warfare at ground level who will be working with the COOAs.
So it's actually the same way. Because of the, because of the way that we're going to be reviewing the cases, we're going to be digging deep, and so any service, so right now, the COOAs have subcontracts with foster care agencies, let's say.
Okay.
And so that foster care agency is going to be required to submit case notes. And so we have access to those case notes, we'll be reviewing those case notes, and then verifying the activity that's reflected in the case notes through the teaming process and through the other quality assurance functions that I've mentioned.
And how would that differ from the pre-Danielle case?
So before, we had our case managers doing some of the work. So let's say we're supposed to do monthly visits of children and supervised visits for parents, their children are in placement, and there needs to be a supervised visit so we can work toward reunification. Many times, despite the fact that we were paying a provider agency to do that supervised visit, they just didn't show up, and then we would have to come. Now we don't have that confusion. There's one person who's responsible, one person who can be held accountable, and we'll be monitoring that process.
Okay. You said that there, the court-ordered placements? Councilman Good raised the question around this, this chart that, that he and I keep. And one of the explanations was the fact that the court-ordered placements then disqualify them from being held to the same standards around MBEWV activity. So share an example of a court-ordered placement that would not be treated the same way as those in this $47,000, $47 million contract number.
So when the court, and probably the best example of these cases are the juvenile justice cases, where the court has authority to make decisions based on their concern regarding community protection. So with, with youth who are arrested through the delinquent system, if there's a community protection issue and they can't find a placement that's close to Philadelphia, they might want to send a kid to, we use Summit Academy, George...
Roanoke, Roanoke, Virginia.
Well, we don't do that anymore, thank God.
And let me, let me...
We've gotten better, we've gotten better without estate placements. We still send, in my opinion, our children too far away from home, where we can't do the kind of family work that we should be doing.
Agreed.
But if there's a court order for a placement, even if I don't have a contract, I'm required to get a contract.
The reason why I say Roanoke, Virginia, I actually, when I worked for this state court unit at Philadelphia Family Court, was responsible for taking a six-foot, 15-year-old to Roanoke, Virginia, because our area did not have the skillset capability agency that could adequately meet his needs.
That was the Pines, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
So as, as I, we said to Dr. Evans this morning, it's been a dramatic paradigm shift in figuring out how we can keep kids closer to home, and that's a good thing.
Yes.
That's a good thing. Back to the COOAs, we're well aware that there is an expectation that boards look like Philadelphia. And so in the, with the COOAs, does the composition of the boards of the COOAS operators represent the communities that they serve? Was that a part of the RFP process in this review?
The, the 25% requirement was part of the RFP process, absolutely. And traditionally, with the nonprofits that we have in Philadelphia, we're pretty lucky that many of the boards and staff reflect the population that's being served. And so with the selections that we've made, some of the, some of the providers do better than others, and one in particular, we're not satisfied with the board composition, and we've talked to them about that. And in the next 30 days, they'll be appointing two more African-American women to their board based on our concerns regarding the composition of the current board. And so this to us is a new opportunity for us to be clear with the community umbrella agencies what our expectations are, and to work with them to make sure that they meet those expectations, including the law requiring the 25%. And so I meet with the COUAs directly every Monday, and we talk about these issues, and we've seen improvements in the small amount of time that we've been meeting with them, and we continue it.
So they, they get it, that this is not optional, it is required, and in cases where they have, they're having difficulty in meeting this new requirement, the consequence is what?
Well, the consequence could be, if it was necessary, that we award the contract to somebody else. They've actually understood this. I think that they've worked hard and they've worked together. So for instance, they identified a computer supplier on their own together, that's a minority contract. And so what we're seeing is a lot of partnership and a lot of thinking together, which is not something that we usually see among the provider community. So it's a positive, and we need to continue to push for them to, to do that kind of work. And we make suggestions to them as well. So for instance, at our COOAS meeting this week, we brought in Congresso and the Addict as potential subcontracts for the COOAs. And so the department has a role in this, too. It's not just abdicating the responsibility to the COOAs, it's something that we need to monitor and we need to continue to push.
Okay. The bell is rung, I'll get, get to my next set of questions on the next round. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, when you, when you give a hint, I, I try to, I try to, my... Mr. President, when you, when you give a hint, I, I try to, I try to my best to the degree that I can accommodate it. So, Councilwoman Tesco and myself have submitted a bill for consideration that looks at the community-based oversight board. So, during that hearing, a lot of these questions and concerns will come up, because we do have some questions, and some of them were raised in these chambers, about composition, about possible conflicts of interest, people, service providers being on those oversight boards which might have a reluctance to kind of report some of these things, which these...
So, are you talking about the community oversight board that monitors DHS or the community umbrella agencies? I'm sorry, I'm just confused.
All of the above. So, we're looking, we're talking about the community oversight boards that deal with you, and you deal with the subproviders and the COAs. So, my, my, my point is, and simply point, is that we're talking about a lot of money. Each of these agencies that we've developed COAs, how much are they contracted with the city for? On average, about $7 million?
No, it's, it's more than that.
How much is it?
Um, it's about...
Per, per?
Yeah, it's a total of, of $40 million.
So, divided by 10? Okay. So, my point is, Councilwoman Bass has not met with her COA group. I have not, or maybe you have, but I haven't, and I'm concerned that we need to. And usually, when there's a contract over a year, it has to come before this body. We're talking about a considerable amount of money that is not going to get the oversight that it needs. So, my concern is that, yes, in the effort of it being more efficient, well, it kind of usurps our responsibility here. So, we're going to take a look at that, and we'll send you a copy of it. So, there's plenty of time for us to have these longer discussions, but three things that concern me: diversity, monitoring, and self-monitoring possibly within the COAs. And at the end of the day, it's about these kids, and making sure that they're given the best environment, which I think we share that concern. I, no doubt in my mind that you and your staff do. But sometimes, in order to do an efficient thing, we're not doing also ineffective thing, and I want to make sure that that happens. And the jury's still out, it's very new, but this is the best time to start to take a, a strong look at it, when we're talking about this much money and impact on that many folks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes... Straight to your nail. Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Had to think about it, huh?
Well, you try to make sure during the rotation that people that haven't asked questions in this particular round get an opportunity, so...
Okay.
The board is a little more challenging than, than meets the eye.
That's all right, that's all right. So, um, so thank you. A couple more questions. Just want to pick up where Councilmember Jones just left off, in terms of, you know, concern about the COAs and the system that we have in place, because it seems as if, you know, that this, you know, again, came out of the Danielle Kelly case, and it, the idea was that, you know, this would be somewhat more effective, or reduce the city's liability by having it sort of, you know, having these COAs which would, you know, do something very similar to what was in place before, because you said that during the Danielle Kelly case, there was an outside provider, and then it was sort of monitored by the city, and, and that fell apart. And it seems like we're actually right back at the same system almost again, maybe with a different name, but it does seem like we're kind of doing the same thing over and over again. And I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the COAs and the way we monitor them, because again, in, in some ways, you know, as Councilman Johnson just, Jones just said, you know, we talk about effectiveness and efficiency, and, and my question is, what is the real goal here? And I would assume that we're really trying to be effective, effective in the lives of these children that we're serving. And so, when it comes to the high turnover at provider agencies, can you talk about, let me ask you, what is the turnover at these agencies, and what, you know, how are you made aware of it? You know, what do you think of it? What is your thoughts behind the agencies and the turnover that they, that they see?
Yeah, so, I, I just want to be clear that this isn't about being more effective, it's about doing our best that we can to take care of the children that we're responsible for. So, that was the only goal that we had in mind in moving forward with Improving Outcomes for Children. And in fact, we haven't recreated the dual-case management system model that existed before. We're not even out of that, because we're doing a phased implementation approach. So, only two of the COAs have been fully implemented. But in regard to the turnover question, we actually meet with the COAs, as I said, every week. We monitor their staffing at those meetings, and we address turnover issues. There have been some turnover issues, and for the...
What kind of, what kind of issues are there?
So, the issues are that the staff before and the provider agencies could have relied on DHS. So, if they couldn't do the work, they always knew that there was somebody at DHS who was going to pick up the slack. That doesn't exist anymore. And so, I think the children and families that we serve, the cases are very complicated. The poverty issues can be devastating.
Right.
The abuse and neglect issues are difficult to see, and this is very hard work. And so, I think the heavy lift that the provider agencies have experienced, particularly since the first cases they took were the safety-related cases, where you see the more difficult issues, were sometimes more than the staff were able to handle. And so, I think that the COAs have done a very responsible job of trying to weed out the staff who can't do this work, because some people just aren't made to do the kind of work that my staff do every day.
No, I, I agree. This is not for everybody.
That's right.
This is not for anybody and everybody.
And so, what we've done is had Khalid Assad and the DHS University go out to each of the COAs, talk through some of the turnover issues, try to provide some technical assistance and additional training to those COAs to make sure that they could be fully staffed.
So, what, what would you say on average the turnover has been?
I mean, do you know what it averages? I mean, it's, it's hard to say, because only two of them have been fully operational, so...
So, for those two, what's the turnover been?
Um, I don't know, I can, I can get you that number.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's important information to have, just to, just so that we can have a sense of...
Sure.
...what, what's going on with the COAs who are handling this. And also, um, you know, one of the things you mentioned was the caseload, and that, again, everybody's not meant for this kind of work. It's very difficult, it's very challenging, very complicated. And so, can you talk about the caseloads that these folks are expected to carry, and what happened? So, it's, so, you know, is my caseload 20 cases or 50 cases, or, you know, what is the caseload that is, is on the average? And if I am not keeping up with my caseload, what does that mean? How does that affect, you know, the service that I provide, that I offer, the care that we offer? What happens then?
So, the caseload sizes for the COAs are 10 families per worker. The state regulations go up to 30, but we know that that would be nearly impossible and not a good thing for kids and families, and so, we did a lot of research. We looked at our caseload sizes, we looked at other systems, and we came up with 10. And that is the caseload size. We think that's a manageable caseload size, but as we continue to learn more about the challenges of the work from the COAs perspective, that's something that we'd be open to changing either up or down based on the monitoring that we're doing and the conversations that we're having with the COAs.
Okay. And I know that the bell runs till I come back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Continuing that line of question, it wasn't where I was going to start. You spoke about the COA caseload. What is your staff's caseload in comparison to what we're asking COAs to do?
So, our caseloads range, our average right now is probably around 17. It depends on where you are in the agency, so our intake at the front end, the staff that do the investigations, the caseloads are a little bit lower there. At the back end of the system, our caseloads are too high right now, and part of that is because we're working through Improving Outcomes for Children and transitioning those cases to the COAs. So, the instability in the agency right now is actually with the back end, because those are the cases that are being transferred over to the COAs. In our adoptions unit, I think our average caseload size is about 15 right now. So, it, it varies, and I can actually send you. We, we monitor the caseloads at DHS on a monthly basis, and we often hear from our staff that the caseload size is too much, and they're not able to do the kind of work that they need to do with the families, which is why we arrived at 10. So, we did a lot of discussion with staff as part of, you know, our due diligence in, in moving forward with the model.
And obviously, we've been working on this COA stuff, and I have a lot of just kind of generic questions, because I think there's been some positives and some negatives, but just wanted to state in, in this kind of framework, because I want to talk about, or I want you to, 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 to talk about, we're creating a, kind of an external unit, and I want to make sure that the rules of engagement for them is one where you want them to be successful, but I also want us at internally also be looking at, how do we make our internal system successful? And so, you know, looking, if, when you see the disparity, you know 10 is ideal, yet our folks are being asked to do 17. When are we going to level that out, so that folks feel like this is not just about them being successful, but it's also internally, in light of the fact, because I think on the staffing issue, we've learned with all the COAs, it's hard to staff.
Absolutely. And so, we're working towards transitioning that whole backend out, which is the difficulty in stabilizing the caseload sizes now. What I'll say to you is that the, the design is for us to build resources at the front end. We'd actually like to have much lower caseloads at the intake section, so that our, our workers can feel good about the investigations they're doing. We have amazing staff in our multi-disciplinary team sections that have too many cases right now. And so, the idea is to make sure that we're able to put the resources at the front end, so the staff can feel better about the work that they're doing. We're going to be increasing their responsibilities with their participation in the teaming, and so, we need to give them the time, not only to manage those investigations, but to participate in the teaming that's going to be the handoff of the case from DHS, once there's an accept for service decision to the COA. So, we agree with you.
Okay. So, you, do you have a plan that you're already articulating about what that number is that gets you there? How many years is it going to take us to get there?
So, we have a plan. The plan is to hopefully get to, right now, all of our new investigation workers get about nine cases a month. We'd like to get that down to six cases a month, and so, we have a staffing plan post IOC that would get us there. And so, we're thinking about those things, and we meet with those, Vanessa's responsible for pulling that plan together, with the support of the other staff at DHS, our leadership team.
Okay. Wanted to ask you in terms of, and we'll get into some of the COA discussion, but I wanted to talk about internally. So, what are the, 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 the things that you're doing internally for your system around building capacity, morale, and all of the issues related? Because again, we'll get to the COA piece of it. Internally, what are some of the things that are going on to help with training and all of those other things?
Yeah, so, training is a big piece of what we're trying to do. It occupies a lot of our time. I think those staff who are now on the COA side are very excited and happy, and so, morale is very different. On the, on the, still in the old DHS system, staff are really struggling, because they don't know what it's going to mean for them. And so, what we've tried to do is, we do a monthly newsletter, we've done a series of all-staff meetings. We did one for all-staff. We had to do it over the course of four days, because we have a lot of staff, where they're able to come together and we answer questions. We're getting ready to do one next month as well, where we're not going to talk as a leadership team, but we're going to actually have the COAs come and present on what's happening in the neighborhoods. And we're also going to have our DHS staff who've transitioned to the new positions in IOC to come and talk about what that looks like, and give them a sense of what their future is. And so, those are constant issues. We have a lot of communication campaigns. We have our Crusaders Award next month, so, and, and last month, we had our breakfast for all of our DHS staff who've been in the agency for 20, over 20 years. So, those kinds of things, we try to do routinely. It was Social Work Month last month, so we gave out goodies and treats, and we had someone come in and do massages, and we set up a photo booth. So, we try to do lots of things for staff morale, but these are hard jobs, and I think when you're in the midst of transformation, the way that we're in the midst of a transformation, staff morale can be low. And so, we've been trying to work on that. We've also recently established an employee recognition program, where every month, we're honoring a DHS employee, giving them like free parking for a month and a, a card, a card, and then we do a kudos corner, because I think every day, the staff at DHS do very heroic work that no one ever talks about. And so, we acknowledge that internally by putting up signs and posters honoring the staff at DHS who've done something exceptional.
On the next round, we'll talk a little bit about long-term sustainability. One of the things that I don't want to see us is in a situation where we, we shift all of our resources and capacity externally, and we don't keep some internally. And so, I want to talk a little bit about long-term, how that looks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Continuing with the discussions and inquiries around COAs. So, we've spoken about board composition, and we'll look to hear how that is progressing in a way that makes sense, so that all of us are, are aware. The next question deals with how COA dollars, how COA dollars go to vendors with minority ownership and/or to vendors with minorities in key management positions? What that process looks like? What the status is to date? What is the, what are the procedures to keep you informed on how they're doing in this area?
So, our contract with the COAs requires me to approve every subcontract.
Oh, really?
So, yes. So, we'll be able to monitor who the COAs are subcontracted with in a way that's consistent with the vision for IOC, that children and families are receiving grassroots, neighborhood-based services that can respond to their well-being needs as well as their safety needs. And so, through that subcontracting approval process, DHS will remain responsible to ensure that diverse continuum of services at the neighborhood level.
Well, that's encouraging, to repeat what was said over here, to know that there's another layer of oversight. So, for COAs who don't get it, they know that you're looking.
That's right. And we've already had to have some difficult conversations with some of the COAs.
Oh, we wouldn't be surprised with that.
And in Florida, you know, one of the systems that we learned a lot from, they actually put a cap on the number of contracts the, the lead agency could have at 30%, and 70% of the contracts had to be subcontracted out. We're getting dangerously close to having to do that, based on some of the COAs not really moving forward in subcontracting the way we need them to. And so, if we need to do that, we certainly have the authority and discretion to do that.
Okay. So, that's, that speaks to the program management, social service side. Now, let's look to the business side of the ledger. How, what are the expectations with regards to supplier diversity and those who, who those COAs do business, that from catering to uniforms to etc., etc., etc.?
So, all of the subcontractors will be required to have a supplier diversity plan. That will be part of the review process that the COA does, and part of our internal review process that we have at DHS.
Is that a new requirement piece for DHS?
So, it's a new requirement for us. All of our contractors over the last two years have been required to have a supplier diversity contract, so if it's an, an existing DHS provider, it shouldn't come as a surprise. But our numbers aren't always that good, and so, we need to use this as an opportunity to reinforce that expectation.
And what are some of the excuses given to those who can't figure out how you can look, look at the Greater Philadelphia Chamber, or the African-American Chamber, or the Latina Chamber, to find businesses in this town that have what it takes to do business with these larger nonprofits?
I think some of the excuses we get is that they're not certified, but we've already set up a webinar with Angela Douda Burton for just the COAs to walk through and do a meet and greet with some of these Philadelphia-based providers who are certified. So, Angela is being very proactive in assisting us in making sure that we're doing a better job.
Okay. Well, no, we'll be looking to see what the progress, the status of that is, or next year when you report. That hasn't rung yet. Since launching the Improving Outcomes for Children program, what are some of the significant changes your office has noted thus far related to delivery of services?
I think the most promising change is the teaming process, where we've actually created a philosophy and values that really value the voice of families in that teaming a philosophy and values that really value the voice of families in that teaming process. And so, we have supports at the COO with parent advocates. If it's a youth case, any youth 13 or older participates in the teamings. And I think that we try to facilitate the teaming in a way that provides them with the supports necessary to work through their plan. And I think they feel more valued in the process. And so, we've gotten very positive responses. Our teaming director, Tyrone Harvey, is here. And I think that's been one of the more positive developments. And so, we're seeing a change at the neighborhood level where families feel that their voice is something that we value in trying to help heal the issues that brought them to their department's attention. And that's very promising and staff feel good about that, too.
Okay. Thank you. I'll see you on the next round.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascos.
Thank you. I have some more questions. How does this new program impact on your budget? So, you're running the show, it's $15 million, and now you're contracting now to all these agencies. What is the budget increase?
So, there is no budget increase. It's a budget-neutral proposal and we knew that there was no new money and this really wasn't about money. It was at streamlining a process and making sure that we got better outcomes for kids and families because the accountability was clear. So, what we've done is actually just looked at, based on each COO, the number of children and families being served, did a lot of work on coming up with case rates, and we now have a case rate for each of the COUAs. And we're going to implement that case rate July 1st, but up until now, we've been paying the actual costs. And we're actually doing fine financially right now, but we also have a financial audit piece because we need to make sure we keep doing fine because there is no additional money and we need to make sure that we're using the taxpayer dollars effectively.
So, now, are you transitioning out some of the caseworkers that worked for DHS?
No. We made a commitment to our staff that there would be no layoffs and so through attrition, we've lost some staff, but we recently hired some staff. We have identified new functions. And so, what used to be the social work supervisors on the backend of the system in our ongoing service regions are now practice specialists and they actually conduct the teamings that I've been talking about. And then, our workers who provided the direct case management system in the ongoing service regions are now called team coordinators. So, what they do is they really get prepared and get families prepared for the teamings. They gather all the paperwork, they invite all the people who need to be there, and they participate in those teamings as well. We've also...
What's a teaming?
A teaming is a family team conference that we're going to be doing at key decision points. And there's four different teaming conferences that Vanessa can, she's the expert and Tyrone is really the expert, but she can talk through all of those teamings and what happens at each of those teamings and how we remain accountable.
Now, these are the teamings within, that you're teaming with the COO?
Yes. In the neighborhood. In the neighborhood, yes.
Yes. So, what we have is four different types of teamings. Primarily, they are conducted in the neighborhood because we found that if you can bring services closer to the home of someone, if I only have to walk three blocks as opposed to take two buses, I'm more inclined to go. So, we do them in the community at various places and the COUAs are responsible for identifying sites that are appropriate. Sometimes they're in, they may have a partnership with a religious place or a rec center or wherever, but we do them in the neighborhood. At the table is the family primarily. They are the most important ones. Then, the facilitator, who is a DHS social worker, who's facilitating the meeting, the team coordinator, DHS social worker as well that Amy Marie just talked about. But also, at the table is any of the other providers who are giving services, usually CBH or Department of Behavioral Health is there because many of our cases involve that. And anybody else who may, our education support center, because we have found that, you know, we're really trying to work on improving the educational outcomes for our kids, particularly given the status of the school system right now. So, we have education support center liaison there. And anybody else that may be able to add to the family and what's going on. Ultimately, at that table, things are discussed, they have key decision-making points, but usually around every 90 days. And we do that because we now have court hearings around every 90 days. So, it's also a check-in point in terms of whatever court orders to make sure that things were done so that everyone can come to a consensus in terms of when we present in court. At the table, in those initial conferences, which are the child safety conferences, if we are removing a child from a home, we're trying to figure out if we can stabilize a child in their home. You would have a DHS worker, because our front-end investigators do the initial investigations, but also COO may have a representative. The conferences moving forward would have the COO worker or case manager who is assigned to the case present at the table.
Let me do that for a second. Families have experiencing problems.
Yes.
You, DHS has things, and then at some point, you assign them to a COO.
Yes.
Is that the way they get to the COO?
Yes. The way that they...
They get to the COO through DHS or through the court?
Through DHS because primarily when, how it would flow is, we would get a call into our hotline. We would investigate. Based on that investigation and the safety assessment that we do, we make a determination as to whether or not there is a safety threat that exists or whether or not this family needs services. We accept the family for services. It's after the investigation is completed and we have made a determination and accepted them for services that the case is actually handed off at one of the teamings to the COO so that the family can, you know, meet that new COO worker and it is transitioned from DHS to the court. That's when it's handed off.
So, yesterday, the Community Oversight Board released a report.
Yes, sir.
And as Councilwoman Sanchez said, there have been some improvements, yet there's still some challenges. I think one of the areas of improvement is the visitation portion that they stressed that in 13.
Yes. It's one of the challenges, not improvements.
All right. So, that's one of the challenges. And that brings to mind one of the issues that we shared with the staff and they've been working on it diligently. So, it's my, also my understanding that this is, this board was created under the street administration.
That's correct.
And that they, there is at least a recommendation or feeling that they may be out of useful life, that they're ready to disband or...
No. What happened is about a year and a half ago, the Community Oversight Board, they report to the mayor, they don't report to me. They reported to the mayor that we had substantially completed most of the 37 recommendations that were made by the Child Welfare Review Panel, and they felt that they didn't need to do that anymore. Dr. Schwartz and the mayor felt that they were so beneficial to the improvements of the agency and that we still had so much more work to do that they needed to stay.
Oh, okay.
And at that time, we added some, we had lost a couple of members, we added some additional members, we added former Mayor Good, we added Shelley Yanoff, we added a youth advocate who had aged out of the foster care system, and we added a parent advocate who had lost her children to DHS and had children in placement. And so, we also decided that while we may have had a stabilization around how we were handling safety cases, we really needed to move on to well-being issues. And so, I'm sorry.
I know, because this is my clock. I just wanted, I got...
Okay. I won't...
What I wanted to say was that it, to me, a lot of the questions that are being brought up are found within this report and that President Clark did his due diligence and realizes that we may have some further input on this, which I think is important. Councilwoman Tascos' bill and ours is looking into this relationship. And I think specifically, Councilwoman Bass, around the question of the newborn COUAs, that we need to monitor this a while to, you know, it's like anything, you need beta testing. You need to take it out on the road and see what works real well, reinforce that, and see what needs a little tweaking that might better improve what is our common goal, which is service for these kids. So, we've seen some inherent conflicts. We think maybe, if we talk about it a little more, and I heard you say that the COUAs are coming in to talk to your staff about what's going on in the real world, because all of us are sitting in these chambers, but these babies are out there in these homes. Well, it might be good to have a couple of members from council go to that, too, to be able to ask questions and get some concerns raised about it. And I trust my leader, Councilwoman Tascos, who runs that committee, to, you know, has put a lot of time in on this, as at least someone who has a wheelhouse of information about it. So, that's up to you, Council President. But I think this board is raising some of the issues. When we talk about this type of money and this amount of responsibility, we do need to have some input.
I agree, Councilman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Jones, I agree with you. The more input, the better. And so, you know, I could agree with myself all day long, but it's important to hear what other people think and what other input can be provided to really perfect the system. And so, just a couple more questions. Can you talk about if a COO is not performing up to par? What is the formal process for the city ending a relationship or breaking an agreement with the COO?
So, our contract allows us to get out of any contract with 30 days' notice.
30 days' notice. Okay. And...
I'm sorry. We have to give 30 days' notice to the COO if they're not performing consistently with our expectations.
Okay. And what would bring a COO to that point, that you would determine that they're not performing up to your expectations?
There could be lots of issues. So, the most obvious would be repeated patterns of not taking care of the children and families that they're required to serve. And I've been doing this work long enough to know that one incident should determine an outcome, but if we are monitoring the COU as the way we expect to monitor them, and that is on a weekly meeting with them and looking at their safety assessments and digging into their files, we're going to know pretty soon whether there's a pattern of children not being properly served.
Right.
And we're going to have to take some urgent action if we see that. And we've had to do that since I've been commissioner and we don't hesitate to do that when we need to.
Okay. And as you said, I mean, this is not new to you. You've been around. How long have you been in this line of work?
27 years.
27 years. So, you know, or know the signs of a provider who should not be in place?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the other question I have for you is, in terms of DHS workers that move into COUAs, is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, what's the process there in terms of moving a employee with Department of Human Services into a COO?
So, they're still, they're actually still DHS staff. They just have a new job title and their location changes. So, and I talked about this before, when social work supervisors are transitioning into practice specialists who lead the teamings and social work service managers transitioning into team coordinator roles, also, social work supervisors transitioning into practice coaches, which sort of work within our DHS university. When we're noticing a problem based on our case reviews that we're doing with the COUAs, we don't want to just say, oh, they're not doing well. We want to go in there, sit down with them, talk through what our findings are, and help them get better.
Okay.
And so, that's the role of the practice coaches.
Okay. And so, if you're taking a DHS worker, who is still a DHS worker?
Correct.
You're taking them and you're moving them to a new location and with a new job title and responsibility, what happens with their old caseload?
So, the old caseload has transitioned over already.
So, it goes with them as well?
No. No. These are, so this has been a very complicated and difficult task for us to transition these cases. So, we review all the cases before they transfer over. As staff get freed up because cases are transitioning to the COUAs, those staff are the ones who can apply. It's not a one-for-one. It's, staff apply as caseloads shrink, staff apply for the new positions. They get interviewed and then they move into those roles.
So, again, so if I'm a DHS worker and I move over to a COO and I had a caseload of, say, 20 cases, and then those 20 cases are not coming specifically with me, the person who has been familiar with those cases, knows those families, has been intimately involved with the care of those children, those cases are now going elsewhere.
So, that's also done very carefully. So, if cases, because we've been involved with the family for a long time and the case is getting ready to close out in the next couple of months, those cases won't get transitioned. So, Kimberly Ali, who's our operations director on the ongoing service region side, actually personally has herself and a unit that reviews all those cases before the transition takes place. So, the cases...
But I guess what I'm saying is, it seems as if there's a gap in care. And it seems as if, you know, like I said, if I'm a DHS caseworker and now someone else has my cases, or actually, I leave and no one else is immediately assigned, it seems. And, you know, there might be, you know, you figure, okay, out of the 20 cases that, you know, I have, you know, maybe five of them are sort of on the tail end or, you know, they seem as if it's going to be okay, it's going to be a situation where we can close a particular case. And then the other, you know, 5, 10, 15, whatever cases kind of sit and wait for someone to pick them up.
So, they wouldn't sit and wait? I mean, I think you're laying out one of the challenges of moving to Improving Outcomes for Children, which is running a dual-case management system and transitioning those cases over. And so, there's, obviously, we're not letting cases languish. I mean, the whole turnover process...
But I guess I'm still not clear. So, if I have 20 cases and say, five of them are about to drop off, so there's another 15 cases, I've moved over to a COO, who is immediately picking up my 15 cases and handling them?
Yeah. There's a redistribution of the cases through a floater unit. I can let Vanessa talk about it.
Basically, what happens is that your remaining caseload, whether it be the 15 or the 20, is redistributed amongst other social workers within your unit section, whatever. There are floaters units in every section. We call floaters because they pick up caseloads for just such a time as this, when somebody leaves, that there is a worker that can fill in that gap. If the floater's unit has already sort of reached their maximum capacity, which does happen at times, and certainly while we're running this dual system, moving cases into the new system under IOC and trying to work our old system, what you have described has happened. But we do make provisions for them to be reassigned.
So, it has happened. The cases have been kind of just left hanging?
They're not left hanging, they are reassigned to another worker is what happens to that caseload. That entire caseload, whether it's the 20 cases, to use your example, would be redistributed. So, two might go to one worker in this unit, two go to another, but they're redistributed so that they are all reassigned.
Is there a particular, do you have a timeline for when someone should be in touch to say, you know, I'm going to be helping you now, I'm, you know, going to be working with you now, you know, Cindy Bass is somewhere else now? And I guess an initial contact. Do you have a timeline for when that has to happen, when a case is, when a caseload is redistributed?
So, yes. So, when a case is redistributed, the new worker is actually required, usually, we try to get them out within like seven days of getting the case, to meet the family so that they will know, I am now your new worker, particularly the young people, because we want as much continuity as possible for them to go out, hopefully, meet the family and to say that I'm your new worker. We also, and it's a little bit easier for us to manage it in this situation because we know the worker that is leaving and when they're leaving, so we're already trying to prepare for that transition. So, that worker is already working with her families and letting them know, I'm going to be transitioning into a new position. And if she knows who the worker's going to be, so-and-so is going to be your new worker. Sometimes they're going out together and meeting the family so that the transition piece occurs. The other thing is, sometimes we have to stagger when they move. While I may have wanted them to go into their new position on May 1st, I may have to hold it up until I have an opportunity, because we have to make sure that all of the cases are accounted for and all of the families are getting the services that they need. So, sometimes you have to stagger when you allow people to move into their new positions.
Okay. Is there any internal, and I know this is my last question, real quick. Is there any internal quality control in terms of ensuring that, you know, that initial contact is happening?
We do get reports on whether or not the initial contact happens.
Within seven, I'm sorry, within seven days, is there...
We monitor visitation. And so, there is a hierarchy. There's a worker, a supervisor, an administrator, a director, assigned to every case so that that's the team assigned. So, that supervisor or administrative team tries to make sure it happens. Now, in some cases, I'm giving you best-case scenario, but to be honest, there are cases where it's the supervisor for a short period of time who's intervening until the case the supervisor for a short period of time who is intervening until the case is reassigned to someone else. So, the contact with the family may be made by the supervisor on the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you. So, I want to talk now a little bit about, around the COAs. I know some of the issues, as this was rolling out, was the issue of these being geographic, geographic overlay with the police departments. Have you guys readdressed that and looked at a better geography versus just the police department for service areas? And how have you dealt when there might be multiple children in a family, and they cross the street, Lehigh Avenue, they're in a different police district?
Yeah. I think on the police district side, and remember, the reason we did that is because that's traditionally the way we assigned cases. And so, there's been a huge community engagement strategy that not only DHS is engaged in, but really the COAs are responsible for. And so, now they're viewing it as the neighborhoods. So, they're able to articulate the neighborhoods they're in instead of just the police districts that they're in. On the issue of children moving or living with a relative across lines, we do an assessment of that family and make a decision based on the family composition and the service array as to which COA that case belongs to. And, you know, those are sticky situations, but our families often are transient, and so that's not an uncommon occurrence. And, you know, they have family members throughout the city, and sometimes they move from one family to another. And some of those arrangements are informal, and some of those arrangements are formal or court-ordered. And so, we have to pay close attention to that issue, but it is a real issue.
When there are disputes around the handling of a COA, does the family have the ability to appeal that back to DHS directly?
Yes. Not only, every COA has our Commissioner's Action Response phone number on their letterhead, but also anybody, including the family, can request a teaming at any time. So, it doesn't have to be just the intervals that Vanessa talked about. And the family is, this is explained to them. If they're not happy with something that's happening, they can say, I want to have a teaming, and they can call for a teaming. Anybody in the sort of team, as we define it, can ask for that. But they also have very clear directions on the letterhead of the COAs that they can call DHS directly.
Okay. Going back to, and you said this, and I heard it, and you weren't affirming it as strongly as, I know you meant it when you said it, around the contracting and the subcontracting. One of the things that we've seen over the course of the last six years, in particular during this transition, there were a lot of services all over the city. There was a robust provider system, and there are many reasons. Cultural competency was an issue. Some people don't cross Broad Street for services, all the things that you talked about. Have you done an analysis of the providers by area and looked at who's been defunded as a result of this shift in terms of who's still in the game, who's not in the game, who's made the decisions and had, because in some cases, you had providers that provided very unique services, because that's all they wanted to do, which was a good thing. But because they're small, and we talked a little bit last year around capacity, but I didn't want a COA to say, I'm not contracting with this person because I don't think they have the capacity, that they not be responsible for building the capacity so that they can play in this new reformed arena.
Yeah. So, this, this is a really important issue. That's why I retain the authority to approve any subcontract. So, that's probably the biggest piece of this.
But have you done an analysis? Can you see who's not in the game?
So, we, what we've done is, we haven't done an analysis, a formal analysis. What we've done is, we've met individually with many of the providers who we still continue to believe are very valuable pieces of the work that we're going to do with IOC, and paired them up with the COAs in their area. So, there's many of those relationships and partnerships that are forming. Additionally, what we've decided to do is really pull back on the prevention contracts, because when we asked the COAs to be able to articulate a prevention plan, they really weren't able to do that in the comprehensive way we need them to do it. And so, there's going to have to be a whole lot more work that's done between the current prevention providers and the COAs in order for us to get to that place. And I think there's also going to need to be some of those community engagement strategies evidenced in a different array of contracted services than we've traditionally had. Some more of the grassroots providers that have never had a contract with the city now have an opportunity to really be supports in the neighborhoods that they, they can do good work in.
For me, having that analysis is important. So, one of the things that I've tried to do is ask people to willingly talk to other folks, and I've gotten a lot of resistance. And so, I'm glad that you're pulling back on the prevention side, because I think a lot of those services, given what's going on, particularly at the school-based level, there's a real need for, a real hands-on kind of intervention. And so, I, there's some resistance from the providers to even meet with folks to make a decision about whether that's a service that they need, even though their own agency capacity demonstrates their lack of knowledge in a particular area.
You're, you're right on target. And I think it's interesting that initially, I think the COAs haven't been as proactive as they need to be, and some of the other providers are just scared of the unknown. And so, we've been...
Well, they don't want pushback.
That's right.
And so, you know, we're all trying to play nice in the sandbox.
Yes.
But you have to be the hammer.
That's right.
And so, you have to say to folks, you have an organizational capacity that's A, B, C, D. You do not know X, Y, and Z.
That's right.
And so, you have to force that, because it's not going to happen. And so, what you have is this tension around the smaller groups saying, I don't want to complain because then I'm going to be, the little that I have is going to be taken from me, as opposed to how do we provide that kind of intervention?
Yeah. I think you're right. And some of these providers actually have done such a good job, the community-based providers, they need to expand what they're doing now. And so, there's a couple of providers that are more tentative about doing that. And we're facilitating those meetings and those partnerships.
Can you put someone in charge within your team of the COA piece to, that maybe can serve as the entry point for these groups, to say, these are some of the services, because you're doing the capacity kind of analysis, that you can say to a service provider, these are some of the gaps, and here are two or three people that we've reassessed that are in your geography?
Yes.
We need to put someone in charge of that, because as you and I both suspected, it's a problem.
Yeah. We're actually getting ready to hire somebody who's just in charge of resource development.
Okay.
And some of that is connected to our Child Welfare Demonstration Project. But the bigger piece of that is, where are the gaps in services, and how do we fill those gaps in services with community-based providers?
And that had to be written into the renewals?
Yeah.
I mean, I really just feel like people will linger and use up the clock and... Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good. Good, Councilwoman. Thank you. Okay. We still have one department left to say, status report. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
So, having heard that caution, Commissioner, this report is issued annually?
Yes.
The report on progress on the Community Oversight Board. So, the next time we'll see an update is April 2015?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, there's going to be an interim report here, because Dr. Linda Morrow and Judy Silver, Dr. Silver, who are members of the Community Oversight Board, did a ton of work on older youth as one of the well-being issues that they wanted to dig into. And so, we're going to issue an interim report just on what's happening with older youth. And so, you'll be able, you'll be able to see that. Part of the issue was that they, it was so comprehensive that they hadn't had a chance to crosswalk it with the, with the COAs. And we've done so much work under the leadership of Margarita Davis Boyer, who's our older youth coordinator, that in some ways, they couldn't keep up with the progress that was being made at the Achieving Independence Center and a lot of the enhancements that Margarita's tried to bring to the agency.
Well, that's a segue to my last and final questions. I have many more on the COA briefly, because the clock has actually run. An update on that population, because we know they're least likely to go to college, they're most likely to end up in homelessness, et cetera, et cetera. So...
I could, I could talk about that for a very long time. It is a huge area of focus for us. I could submit something in writing that gives you...
Could you please?
...an update on, on the way we've changed what we're doing at the Achieving Independence Center and the work that we're doing with the school district, which we think is really essential.
Yes.
And urgent right now. And those are the two areas where we've really expanded what we're doing in areas of well-being, particularly with education, given the crisis at the district and with our older youth and the issues that they have on the behavioral health side, and great partnership with, with Dr. Evans and Judge Dougherty on all of those issues.
Please do that.
I will, I will do that, because the Council President wants to...
Transition.
Not have me talk for a long time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President, for your patience. We're going to get another bite at the apple when we talk about the legislation examining the Community Oversight Board, but I want to transition very quickly to talk about your relationships in schools, particularly your truancy division. That was eliminated. It's not eliminated?
No.
Is it under the IOC model now?
So, we have truancy units at DHS. In 2009, we started an education support center, and we've consolidated the truancy work from the education, that used to be in prevention, into the education support center. In fact, we've enhanced those services. We just decided to hire 27 additional staff to put in the education support center. Many of the focuses will be on truancy, but we're actually assigning two workers per COA in the schools...
Those are your employees.
They'll be DHS staff in schools that have been identified as having more DHS kids and by the district as having leadership that are receptive to us working in those schools and actually identifying prevention issues in a very proactive way. In addition, per COA, we're going to have one DHS staff who's going to be working on little kids, so kids zero to five, who we really need to make sure are making the right connections to early intervention and Head Start and are ready to learn by the time they get into kindergarten. And then, for older youth, we're going to have one staff per two COAs that are really focusing on the very concerning educational outcomes for older youth who are part of the DHS system. We've already...
I'm glad to hear that, because with shrinking staff at the schools, it was very disturbing to see that that kind of...
That's exactly why we did it.
I appreciate it. And if you could provide to the chair and other members of council, how many truancy cases do you get from K to third, third grade, you don't have to answer it now, but also from fourth grade to 12th grade? And I would be interested in seeing that correlation with trouble at home or other issues that may be factors in dealing with that.
Yeah. I will say that the truancy issues are very difficult to arrive at right now, because the district no longer has the staff to identify truant children. And so, we're going to have to think very differently about how we use our truancy providers and really have them go into the schools and in some ways, try to get those cases for us, because the process that we created two years ago no longer works, because the district truly does not have the staff necessary to identify those children. And it's really important for us to be able to identify those kids and provide a really prompt intervention.
Well, one, one final point is that I would encourage you, along with the Department of Health, along with Behavioral Health, to do the briefing that you did several years, maybe a year ago.
Sure.
I thought that was helpful to members to get a better understanding of the interlocking relationship of that. But just like with this truancy, it flips over into the schools.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of interlocking relationships. And quite frankly, why I'm concerned about COAs, because I know how important, you know, your staff are to all of these other agencies. And I don't know if I'm going to get that same quality from some persons. And I know they have a good reputation, but I know that you're the, and I don't want to use the term devil, but you're the devil I know, as opposed to trying to get to know the other ones.
Well, you know them now. They're just doing the same work my staff are doing. So, there, many of them are the same workers who've been working in the system for 20 years. They've just been doing duplicate functions of what DHS staff were doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, and just last couple of questions. And a review of the budget shows that your fringe benefits cost, we're going to increase about 6.7 million. And, and I'm wondering, if you have an explanation as to why that's increasing so much? One would think that it was actually decreasing...
Marcia Dixon is our fiscal officer. She's going to come up to answer the question.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Marcia Dixon. I'm the fiscal officer at DHS. But that reflects, is we were allowed to get reimbursed more money from the state...
Oh.
...for fringe benefits. Our fringe benefit rate went up about 10%. It's been at, like, 43% for about maybe five or six years. They finally released a bulletin that allowed us to draw down more funding for our fringe benefits. So, what you were saying before was only 43% reimbursed.
Okay. So, you weren't getting reimbursed the full amount, basically?
Right.
Okay. And now, you're being reimbursed the full amount?
We're being reimbursed 53%, but from prior years, I know that the city's fringe benefit rate with unfunded liability was more upwards of 60, 65%. So, we're getting closer.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
And the other question I had is, if you could discuss, Commissioner, your internal, you know, when it comes to your employees within DHS, and I know that that covers, you know, a wide spectrum of folks, but can you talk about your hiring and termination processes?
So, we actually hadn't done hiring for a while. We recently hired, over the last eight months, 119 new staff. And so, the hiring process is that we get a list, and we look at that list and try to interview and select the best candidates as part of that process.
If an employee has a grievance, what's the process?
Based on not getting hired?
No, no, no. An employee.
Oh.
Someone who is hired.
We work, yeah, we work through our human resources department and try to address whatever grievance that they have. The union is pretty instrumental in working with them to address those grievances.
I would...
And when there's a grievance that comes to my attention, it's usually assigned to one of the deputy commissioners. So, if it's in children and youth, Vanessa would sit down and try to mediate that grievance and come up to a resolution.
I would assume that, you know, everything is done in writing, that there's a paper trail?
Yes.
So, if, if there was an issue, that there, if there was an investigation, if there was a problem, then I would be informed in writing and provided a copy of whatever in writing, and that there's an appeal process? Is that correct?
Yes. There's an employee violation report that's issued as a result of discipline, and then there's an appeal process to that.
Okay.
If there's an investigation, there's a written report that...
That's provided?
It depends on the nature of the investigation. So, we usually consult with law, depending on what the investigation is.
So, if there's an investigation into an employee and...
So, many of the cases where we have investigations are related to the integrity officers. So, those cases are usually handled in consultation with the Inspector General's office and the Law Department. And so, depending on whatever the finding is, we would turn it over if they advised us to turn it over, and in some instances, we would not turn it over.
So, if I am, I'm your employee and terminated, at that point...
Oh, those are, those are employee violation reports. And then, there's a due process that accompanies all of the employee violation reports, where there's a preliminary hearing. And then, if it can't be resolved at the preliminary hearing level, we have a hearing where there's a panel, there's...
So, there should be a hearing?
Correct.
So, if, does that matter regardless of the rank of the employee?
Um, no. No. Every employee, if they want to have a hearing, has a right to have a hearing.
So, every employee...
Unless they're an exempt, unless they're an exempt employee.
Unless they're an exempt employee. And who would be considered an exempt employee?
The deputy commissioners. I'm an exempt employee.
And what would be the process?
Sort of the leadership, the leadership team of DHS.
And what would be the process for them?
For, for discipline?
Right. For discipline or termination?
Um, there would be a hearing. I mean, there'd be the same...
There would be a hearing for an exempt employee.
Well, there could be a hearing for, there could be a hearing for an exempt employee, but usually it's in the discretion of the appointing authority, whether they want to have a hearing or not. It depends on what the nature of the concern is.
Back up for one second. You said there could be a hearing at the discretion of who?
The appointing authority. That would be me.
Mm-hmm. So, you would determine if there is a hearing for an employee that was going to be terminated?
It depends on whether...
An exempt, an exempt employee?
The appointing authority. That would be me.
So, you would determine if there is a hearing for an employee that was going to be terminated?
It depends on whether.
An exempt employee?
It depends on whether termination is an issue. So, there are different rules with exempt employees.
Right. But so, I'm saying specifically if you were going to terminate an exempt employee, you could, you could determine if they had a hearing or not?
If I wanted to terminate them?
Yes.
No, because I don't need to have a hearing for an exempt employee.
Okay. So, if they're an exempt employee, there's no hearing that's required?
There have been issues where we have had formal discipline for exempt employees.
No, but I'm asking about specifically what's required?
I don't want to misspeak, so let me make sure. I always consult with my HR department. And in areas where there's an exempt employee, I would consult with the Law Department as well, Suzanne Riley.
So, before you terminated an employee who was exempt, you would have consulted with the Law Department and HR?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jones.
That's for the.
Not you, mistake.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Evening.
Good evening.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Council President Clark and distinguished members of City Council. My name is Danette Mintz. I am the Director of the Office of Supportive Housing. I am joined today by OSH Chief of Staff Joy Presson and OSH Deputy Director Roberta Cancelier and OSH Deputy Director Letty Ahia Hinton. The mission of OSH is to plan and coordinate Philadelphia's response to homelessness and assist individuals and families experiencing homelessness to achieve greater self-sufficiency and long-term housing. In addition, OSH administers Riverview Home, a state licensed personal care home that provides housing to low-income elderly and disabled persons. I'm pleased to offer this testimony outlining the OSH budget request for fiscal year 2015. The proposed fiscal year 2015 budget is $91,838,358 and includes an allocation of $43,613,822 in general funds, which represents 47% of our budget, and $48,224,530 in grant funds, which represents 53% of our budget. The fiscal year 2014 general fund budget, I'm sorry, 15 general fund budget is $45,526,300 and includes additional funding requested by City Council in fiscal year 13 to increase the supply of emergency housing for victims of domestic violence by 100 beds. OSH is the collaborative applicant and coordinates the Federal HUD Continuum of Care for Homeless Assistance in Philadelphia. OSH operates centralized intake into the city-funded emergency housing system. We oversee more than 2,500 contracted emergency housing beds, provide financial assistance to prevent homelessness and mortgage foreclosure, and rapidly rehouse homeless households and private rental units, manage state and federal support for food, for shelter, food pantries, and food cupboards, coordinate entry into and oversight of 550 contracted transitional housing units and contract for 950 permanent supportive housing units, which represents 1,800 beds of housing for homeless persons. OSH manages the HUD Required Homeless Management Information System, which is an electronic system to collect data regarding the characteristics and needs of individuals experiencing homelessness in Philadelphia and operates Riverview Home. More than 25,000 individuals are served annually through OSH. This year, Philadelphia endured the second snowiest winter in its history with more than 75 days in which a cold blue was activated by OSH to provide additional resources for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Our city was well-equipped and deeply committed to making extraordinary efforts to provide emergency shelter for people experiencing homelessness in the cold, especially those who are living outdoors. I am pleased to report that we had sufficient capacity to address our winter emergency housing needs and that there was not a single homeless death due to hypothermia. Despite the continued desperate need for affordable housing in Philadelphia, the city is a leader among cities in addressing homelessness as demonstrated through collaboration, innovation, and results. Of 25 cities that participated in the 2013 U.S. Conference of Mayors, Hunger, and Homelessness Survey, including Chicago, Los Angeles, Phoenix, and DC, Philadelphia saw a small decrease in the overall number of homeless individuals on average. Participating cities saw a 4% increase. In 2013, Philadelphia added 462 new affordable housing beds for people experiencing homelessness, more than twice the number in other cities on average. In addition, OSH and partners are making progress toward the national goal of the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, which includes HUD and the Veterans Administration, to end homelessness for chronically street homeless individuals and veterans by the end of 2015 and setting a path to end homelessness for families and young people by 2020. That represents a brief summary of the more detailed testimony that was submitted by the administration. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any members of council may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. A couple of quick questions.
Sure.
In your testimony, you referenced the city's need for more affordable housing.
Yes.
But yet you, I think you suggested that you met the needs of the homeless population in this past year?
We met the needs of the homeless this winter. And that basically means trying to get people off the street who live on the street so that no one would freeze to death. That by no means indicates that we have a housing placement for everyone.
So, okay, so you met the short-term needs, which was the.
Get people off the streets into short-term housing. But for everyone who goes into short-term housing, they need a long-term housing.
Right.
And therein lies the rub.
Okay. And are you, your department, involved in the intermediate or the longer-term housing strategy?
We collaborate with the Office of Housing and Community Development. And we attempt to leverage the federal grants that we receive to develop more housing specifically for the homeless. And we've tried to work through some trials and issues that they've had with reductions anticipated to CDVG and home funds in the past. We also have the unfortunate issue of there being some community oppositions to the citing of homeless projects. And so, we're actually in a deficit position this year in that for the last couple of years in which there's been no new housing development identified for homeless persons.
Okay. So, I understand you have a number of transitional houses in the city of Philadelphia.
Yes.
And that basically prepares people to move into traditional, long-term housing?
Exactly.
So, is there a shortage in this traditional, long-term housing? That would not afford you an opportunity to move folks from transitional into long-term and then freeing up spaces for people that are going through the process, going from homeless to transitional and then to long-term?
So, our continuum sees recruitment of engagement of people on the street who would typically go into short-term housing. And from there, they would move to long-term housing. Likewise, for families who are struggling to find housing they can afford, right now, the only door open to them is emergency shelters. So, they come to our intake centers for placement in emergency housing. We are basically in a, across a spectrum of housing, we are being asked to provide more emergency housing to meet that immediate need. But in responding to that, that means we have increased need of people who need to move out of that housing into long-term housing.
Right.
The rule of thumb across the nation is that not everyone needs to go into emergency housing, primarily because people are poor is the only reason why they're asking for shelter placement. If we had long-term housing available to them, we could make that connection at the front door. But because we have unlimited supply of, of, limited supply of housing, we're not able to make that connection.
Right. So, if, if, if we were able to tell you that we had a strategy to put 1,000 units of affordable housing on the table within the next year or so, you'd be in a position to move a whole lot of people off the street because you have more transitional housing available because the people that are currently in the transitional housing could move into the longer-term housing?
Yes.
Would that be?
I've heard a rumor. And what we typically would do would be to ask if there could be a set aside for homeless families because in our experience, our families don't compete as well as non-homeless, low-income families. So, we really do need a set aside to be able to have a fair opportunity to get homeless folks.
Particularly affordable because of below 60% median income, 60 to 30 is really our target probably.
Yes.
Okay.
But that would be very helpful.
Okay, I'll probably be asking you to come testify at a hearing shortly at some point in time.
Before December.
I mean, we all kind of know the need, but we just want to make document.
I'm here till December.
All right, I'm looking forward to having you at that public hearing. Just wanted another quick question. Page 13, 14, and 15 of your budget details. Proposed allocation of specialized services, family shelters, single shelters, mayors, homeless initiative, winter initiatives. But these specifics are yet to be determined.
Yes.
Is there a reason?
We typically wait until after the budget has been passed before we do the allocations. We indicate to our providers, we're looking at level funding. But if there, you know, is the need for us to do a shift of a few dollars, we typically just wait to make those allocations. And what we try to do is ensure that what we present in the budget is the amount we've allocated for that activity. So, that what you see reflected there is the amount that's allocated for that activity. And that we then make the final allocations once the budget has been passed.
Okay. And I ask this particularly because I know a couple of council members that are not here and some are here are very interested in the commitment to providing housing, short-term.
Sure.
For domestic violence.
Yes.
And we just wanted to make sure that as the priorities get established, that that's right up top.
Sure. Understood. And you'll see that we've been consistent in our budget in which we have not completed that 2015 column.
Okay.
Because again, just depending upon whether or not there's any change in our state and federal grants, that would also impact whether or not we're able to provide the same amount of funding to some of our providers. But in the case of the domestic violence, those are all general funded. And so, I think we can reflect what we would be providing and that's based on the funding that's been specifically allocated for that activity.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my understanding this is your last budget?
Yes.
After how many years?
In October, it will be 32 years of service.
And I would say that I think without fear of successful contradiction, this department has been a national model on the continuum of homelessness to self-sufficiency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How long were you the director of this?
Eight years next month.
So, I don't know if we want to let you go. Quite frankly, we may have to introduce some legislation.
I'm running.
Councilman, you weren't supposed to let it out the bag.
And I say that in jest, but I say it in true because, you know, you deal with the fact that because you're so good, you become a regional magnet for homeless. People know if I can get to Philly, I can get some help. And that is an additional challenge. I, I think when you start looking at your transitional housing program or your rapid rehousing program or your benefit connection dealing with particular groups that have challenges with disabilities. When I look at the demographics you serve, my colleagues often ask for those kinds of figures. You deal with a 28% males, 72% females, which is interesting, 72% of whom are African-American or black, 15% are white, 5% are Hispanic, and 1.8% are Asian-American. So, you, you have a United Nations of, of services there. And I just want to say, and it's been a long day for all of us, but I wanted to let you smell your roses.
Thank you.
A bit and say, my, the true honor to you is on my first day, Mr. President, we had just gotten sworn in in '08. It was January '08. We had a nice little party in the hallway. You, you know, you were part of it. And, you know, it was a lot of people wishing us well. And we had food and entertainment out there, a little band, and everybody had a wonderful time. And then I remember as the conclusion of the dinner, it was a family sitting on my chairs, the chairs I still have out there. And I said, "Did you enjoy yourself?" "Yes." "Are you okay?" "No." And the response was, "Well, why aren't you okay?" I said, "We're homeless." And if you understand sheer panic hit me because now I have to really be a councilperson and provide some real, all the pomp and circumstances are all over. Well, the phone call I made was a fortuitous one. It was to you. And within about an hour, a gentleman came up. And these particular folk had specific needs because they were mentally challenged, some of them in their family. And a van pulled up and you could have been sent by an angel in my eyes because I sincerely believe the. because I sincerely believe that your first constituent service, your question better, you better get it right. Because it's like your first dollar bill you get when you, you know, your first sale, you better make it. And I felt that way, and I, and I felt that way each and every year. Whenever I call your office or your staff, I get a, I get a real live person with a real live answer. They're always the one that I'd like to have, but it's a real live answer-
Thank you.
that I can count on, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I have no other questions, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Wow, she really did make an impact on yourself. Thank you so much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Okay. It goes without saying that work you do is enormously important, and the domino effect of those that you take care of, you can't even measure.
Thank you.
So it certainly does not go unrecognized in the time you put in with your career. School District of Philadelphia, what measures and programs does your department take to ensure that the many children that are in shelters are still able to pursue their elementary, secondary, uh, secondary education? Just speak briefly to the connectedness to the school district and how and what's done.
We work very closely with the school district. As a result of the Homeless Act, there are specific funding that is made available to the school district to assist homeless children. Assistance for transportation, cover cost of tokens, assistance to help those kids with uniform acquisition, et cetera. So we work very closely with their office to, to make that happen. We also work closely with the office in terms of trying to identify how many of our kids are in their system who may not be identified as being homeless but are in need of assistance. And so we work very closely to continue to have an open dialogue in regards to the number of our kids in their system and who might be having some challenges, et cetera.
What's the number to date of, of young people that are in your system and in the proper school district, period?
Do you have that?
There it is.
Yeah. So according to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, there were 3,011 homeless students in school year 2012 through '13 in Philadelphia. And that's through 12th grade. A task force was established to examine the educational needs of Pennsylvania's homeless children and youth. And so as a result of that, the statewide survey was to parents experiencing homelessness that they could report, and the state could try to, to gather that number.
This past winter was tough for everyone.
Yes.
During the, what type of, um, we know that homeless individuals are encouraged to seek shelter, particularly during cold blue. What effects did the increased number, and I'm being presumptuous, we would assume that there was an increased number
Yes.
in, in code, and those who went in because of cold blue. What effects did that have on your budget?
We actually had a fortunate circumstance this year. As you may recall, the agency has been working for the past couple of years to replace the beds due to the close of the Ridge Avenue Shelter, which was our largest single-male facility.
Is that right?
And we closed that in 2012. And so for the last couple of years, we've been looking for locations and sites. And as a result of looking at sites, as we approached this winter, we had more sites than we've ever had access to because of that active work to try to replace the ridge beds. And we took advantage of that without knowing that we were going to have a horrific winter. We just took advantage of the fact that we had access to, to these properties, and we asked the administration for additional money to cover the costs, and we received an additional $347,000 from the administration for us to be able to increase our winter beds. And boy, are we glad we did. And then we had the winter that we had.
What properties?
They are scattered throughout the city. They might be properties that someone, was a correctional facility, and they moved out, and, and they are still in the midst of trying to find a long-term tenant. So when we do a winter program, we only operate from December through the end of March. So we could use it for four months while they're still trying to find a long-term. We work with a couple of homeless providers who actually own their own properties, and they don't have annual programming in them. So if they're vacant during the winter months, we'll utilize those properties. Again, it's dependent on whether you have properties that you can use and whether you have funds to pay for them. And so we were very fortunate that we had a couple of extra properties and got additional funding from the administration this year. And it resulted in us being able to have our outreach teams offer people a placement off of the street this winter. So there was never an issue where we didn't have a bed for a single person on the street this winter, if they were willing to come in.
So it's fair to say that the, the impact was nominal?
The impact was not, I mean, we, we had the funding within our budget because we got the additional $347,000. Had we not gotten that, we would have been in a deficit position for that amount of money.
Miss, I just have one final question for Mr. President, close out. The Rapid Housing Program, my, my office worked as, as well as we felt we could with the circumstance regarding a woman that had been a part of Rapid Housing. And so the question is, what oversight is done for this program? And what regulations are in place to prevent a person from falling through the cracks? What kind of triggers do you have?
We have standard review. That particular case had some extenuating circumstances.
Yes, it did.
Typically, the program is trying to help someone who has the resources to be able to, to pay their rent on an ongoing manner.
Sure.
And in that particular case, we provided that person with some money to get caught up on their rent.
From what I can tell, your office did everything-
Yes.
Including walk water?
Exactly.
To, to help that-
And unfortunately, it is still dependent on folks assuming their responsibility and paying their rent going forward. And there's always some, oftentimes, or more often than we'd like, there are folks who will believe that they can come back to the well whenever they get behind. Our standard policy is that you can only be served once in any 12-month period to provide us an opportunity to serve another Philadelphian who might be in need. And so in this particular case, we had assisted this person, and we were still in the 12-month period in which she could not be served again. We attempted to connect her to housing counseling. She declined, as well as your office did as well.
Yep.
And so the, the resource there is, again, trying to connect her to some behavioral health services to change her pattern of activity.
Sure.
But beyond that, there really is very little that we can do. What she is eligible for is if she comes back in after the 12 months, we can assist her again. But part of what we attempt to determine is if this is someone who is going to be an abuser of our services, we, we try to tag that.
Thank you for helping us to try to figure that out.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And with that, I want to thank you very much for your testimony, and thank you for your years of service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This committee will stand in recess until Wednesday, April 16th, at 10:00 a.m. in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you.